I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Frank West here.
Greg Bendel here.
Kevin Kyrie here.
Garrett DePalma here. Is Lill, are you on?
Yeah, I'm with you guys. Good evening.
Good evening. Lill will be on Zoom this evening. We'll have transmission of Treasury warrants, Treasury warrant number 2422, 2422W, 2422T, 2423, 2423W, 2423T, and 2423S.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Point of order?
All those, we're in the middle of voting, sir.
I know, but there's a point of order. I think there could be a problem with this.
I'm going to take a vote on this and then...
If you vote on it and then there's a problem, how do you handle that?
All those in favor?
Well, we must tell her yes.
Kevin Kyrie is.
Greg Bendel, yes.
Frank, yes?
Garrett DePalma, yes. And we'll approve minutes from June 12, 2023, and November 27 of 2023.
Motion to approve?
Do I hear a second?
Is this, is this on both of them, Mr. Chair, or one at a time?
I was going to vote total, both of them, or?
Okay. I'll second.
All those in favor?
I.
Well, we must tell her yes.
Kevin Kyrie is.
Greg Bendel, yes.
Frank, yes.
Garrett DePalma, yes. I will go to our first appointment, which is John Petron, Senior Associate. Julie's not here, just John. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you very much.
Excuse me.
Just so people know, John is the Senior Associate of Community Paradigm Associates, the firm that the town hired to search for new town manager.
So here for an update and a review of the process where we're at. So we've spoken to all members, one of the members of the team or a couple of members of the team, depending who it was. So let me just introduce the team first for, for the board and for the public. So I'm acting as the lead person, you know, for the firm on, on this. So I'll be the contact person throughout with this. We also have Julie Jacobson. Julie is the retired town manager out of Auburn. She retired earlier. Probably should have said, I'm a, I'm a retired town administrator, town manager as well, 40 years in the business. And I retired out of Burlington in 2019 as town administrator there. We'll also have on the team Bernie Lynch, who's the principal, you know, in the firm, who'll be working with us on the recruiting side of things. So Bernie is a retired city manager and town manager, Lowell and Chalmersford. And we also have Jen Lefferts, who I think most of you have met during the interview process. Jen is a communications expert. So she's a, she had many years in the newspaper side of things as a reporter and in communications in the private sector. So she'll be doing the documentation, writing out the position statement that we'll put together for the firm. We also have Sharon Flaherty, communications expert. She's a partner in the firm as well, and she'll be working with us. So you've got a team of five of us, you know, who'll be working the search on this. So at this point, I think we've made a pretty good headway. So again, we've spoken several times with, you've got a few members here of your screening committee here. We've met with the screening committee. We've talked to each of you individually. And Julie and I also spent the day here last week talking with your department heads. We had some great conversations, really enjoyed talking to your department heads. You've got a great team here. I just want to point that out. You know, having been in the business for a long time, it was, was very nice to come in and understand I'm dealing with professionals on the other side. We got through everything, and that's a great group of people you have, you know, with the folks that we met with. So we're putting together basically a profile. What we're looking at are, first, to outline what are the characteristics you're all seeking, you know, in your next, you know, town manager? You know, what are some of the things you want to see, you know, in, in this manager coming forward? So we're hearing a lot of different things. We're hearing about, you know, leadership and community activity, you know, being able to, you know, take the team and continue leading it forward, but also being, you know, understanding what the community is about, you know, being active in the community. So we're hearing things, you know, of that nature. We also sent out a department head questionnaire to all, you know, department heads, which, you know, we've got a lot of information on, which we're putting together. And also certainly working with the community survey. We've had over 200 responses so far, and that's spectacular, you know? So that's a very good response. Sometimes we get away with just a couple, you know, I can, you know, use my hands and my feet to help count, you know, what's going on. But in this case, I'll put somebody else on that, you know, who can count. And, but it really is nice to see so many responses to this date. So if people, you know, want to continue, that is available, you know, on your website, the information and so on, on putting together that community survey. And we're reviewing the various documents, you know? So we're putting together information. Obviously, our goal, you, you folks are in great financial condition, you know, as a community, you know? So we want to make sure we have those documents to put that out there. We're talking about, you know, the projects you have going in town, some of the goals that, you know, everybody has, you know, to move forward with, you know? And also, you know, addressing, you know, some of the opportunities, you know, to go forward and a few of the challenges you might have, you know? But looking at, you know, your CIP in particular and your, you know, financial outlook going forward, and actually, that's some pretty good numbers there. So that'll be, help us to talk to people about the position, you know, try to entice people to, you know, apply for the position here. So we've already made preliminary contacts with people, you know, folks out there. We've had several conversations, you know, with, you know, potential, you know, candidates out there, just to let them know it's out there, even though we haven't officially advertised it yet. But, you know, we, we've been making contacts. So what's going to happen next is we have a meeting planned next week with the screening committee. Hopefully, we'll finalize the profile, you know, the position statement for the position to go out, and then we'll begin our full recruitment after that. We're going to have a date, we haven't set the final date yet, we're still working on that, but it'll be after the MMA annual meeting, because that's a great place to, you know, make sure we've contacted folks, we see people. You know, both Bernie and I will be there, you know, at the meeting, and we use that opportunity to see a lot of people, to talk to folks, and that'll be, you know, the final opportunity to make sure, you know, we've, we've caught people as well as for people to see us and come talk to us, you know, about it. We get a lot of phone calls and so on, but it's just a great opportunity to see folks. Bernie and I will be at the managers' meeting this Thursday, so the, the last meeting in the year. So we'll certainly be talking about, you know, Wilmington to folks, you know, that we'll be seeing there as well. So we're in the push now, you know? We are recruiting, but we're looking to finalize that final document with the screening committee so that we can get, you know, that piece done, and then we'll get it advertised right after that. So that's kind of the process, you know, we're in at this point in time. One of the things that's, and I know it's on your agenda, I don't know if you want to speak to it now or just hold off, speak to it now?
Yes.
So one of the things we do need to finalize is going to be the pay for the position. So we've kind of had individual conversations with all five of you, you know, about what our view is, you know, of the pay. And the pay as, you know, from the last manager is not within, you know, what we think of the market conditions, you know, for the position. So we've put it on the table, you know, our view is that the market condition, you know, we're recommending or suggesting that you look at a pay of 220 plus or minus, you know, for the position to go forward. We've, we've said that to, you know, each of you. And I know there's been discussions with the screening committee as well, but, you know, we know the numbers. I have the exact numbers from communities in the area, you know, that we, we have an understanding of what it is, and that's certainly not going to put you at the top of the scale, but it puts you in competition. And again, the plus or minus is the key, you know, on that discussion. That doesn't mean the pay will be 220, but it depends on the candidate you're looking, you know? And for us to be able to recruit potentially candidates with experience, you know, in the position, that will give us, you know, an advantage to be able to, you know, to do so. So that's the final piece on that. So I'm here for, you know...
I also want to introduce Rob Peterson and Mike Shampoo from the Select Committee that's going to be working with you more than, we are. But I just want to thank them for being in the audience and during this time that since we're discussing this, if they would like to address it in any form, that's fine. If not, that's fine, too.
And we've been enjoying our conversations with the screening committee to date. So, you know, they, they have a, you know, they've been, they're very knowledgeable as to the situation here, and we've appreciated, you know, what they've been bringing to the table.
Do you, you're going to put this out officially after the first of the year or?
We'll, we'll begin the process if the screening committee approves on the 21st. We'll, we're trying to figure out what's the best date. We'll, we'll talk to the screening committee, you know, on that at that point. I'm not as worried about the date, the closing date, you know, as long as it's after the MMA annual meeting, we'll get it out there. The best time to post it in the MMA, we're, we're having that discussion, you know, as to whether we should wait till January 1st or not. So we'll have, we'll, we'll continue that discussion and, you know, make a decision afterwards on that.
Do you feel that someplace in mid to late January that you would actually start conducting interviews?
No, we're not going to make that, because if we're looking at, let's say, the, I'm just picking a date out, January 25th for a closing day, because it's got to be after, you know, the MMA annual meeting's the 19th and the 20th this year, if, I'm thinking off the top of my head, 19th and 20th. So that means the closing date will be probably the 25th. So we'll wait till, you know, the end of the week, the following week for a closing date. We then need a couple of weeks to, you know, go through the applications. What we do is we then put the applications in groupings, you know, tiers, you know, of usually three tiers. So we'll work and put that together, and then we need to meet with the screening committee. So interviews with the screening committee, you know, probably will be, we'll work that out, we'll work, we've got to work a schedule with the screening committee. That's one of the things that needs to occur next week.
Thank you. Any members have any questions?
Chair, thank you very much. Mr. Petron, thank you for being here. Gentlemen, thank you as well. As I mentioned the other night when we spoke in the interview, I just wanted to say publicly how impressed I've been by your firm and equally as impressed by the screening committee. I've enjoyed watching all the meetings, and, and I walked away feeling very comfortable, you know, where we're at, with the group of people that we've assembled and the work that's being done here. So I appreciate you folks continuing your work going forward, and I appreciate the screening committee getting together on what is almost Christmas Eve. And I know it's a busy time for all of them volunteers, and I really appreciate their, their efforts. So it's been, it's been a very smooth process so far. I anticipate that will continue, and I appreciate all your efforts.
Great, thank you.
So at some point, one of the things that, that I've always mentioned when we come to the town manager process is the process. So I'm wondering at some point, are we going to get some sort of a schedule, like, you know, on such and such a date, we're going to do this, such and such a date, we're going to do this? And, you know, basically, what I'd like to know is that, and it doesn't have to be tonight, but I just need to, I just would like to know what the, you know, what our process is going to be, what, you know, the screening committee's process, and then follow in, more importantly, to our process of, you know, how are we going to conduct interviews, et cetera? So sometimes, at some point, I'd like to know that.
Are you looking specifically for dates or the process itself?
I think at this stage, I'm looking for the process, but not necessarily, again, if you're not prepared to talk that tonight, that's fine.
I, I can give you, you know, a, a brief view, you know, of what the process looks like typically. So we'll work with the screening committee again next week. We'll finalize the position statement. From there, as I talked about earlier, we'll advertise. We'll get the applications due, let's call it, January 25th. From there, we take a couple of weeks to, to work over the, the applications and, and put them in tiers on our end. All the applications will go to the screening committee. The next step is we meet with the screening committee, and they will choose which candidates they will interview for the screening round. So we recommend seven candidates, you know, is, is our recommendation on that, and it depends on what the pool looks like, you know, in the end, but we recommend seven candidates. We'll set up interviews usually within a two-week timeframe, you know, from when the, the committee decides which ones they'll interview. We usually need about two weeks to schedule, you know, the candidates and make sure, you know, they can make that within two weeks. From that process, hopefully, at the end of that, the screening committee can select the final candidates to send to the Select Board for final interviews. We always recommend three, you know, sometimes it may be four, but three is the, you know, the number we, we shoot for relative to that. Once they do that, we will need a couple of weeks to do reference and background checks. So we don't release the candidates until we've done the full reference and background checks. And we're pretty extensive on ours. We ask for five to six references, plus references, people we know as well, you know, you know, to top it off. And we'll put together a report so that when we're ready to present to the board the finalists, you'll get a report from us on each of the final candidates, with usually a two-page synopsis of comments that we've received about, you know, each of the candidates. You'll get that, and then we'll set up final interviews for the board to interview. So those discussions will take place after the first of the year, once we, you know, understand the exact dates, you know, things will fall into place from that point. Is that a, is that cover what you're looking for?
That's the perfect word I'm looking for at this point, yeah.
So that's kind of the process we'll follow.
And like my colleague, Mr. Bendel, I mean, you guys, you know, certainly with, through the interview process with, with me anyway, is, you know, I think you're very, you guys, the three of yous were very professional, and, and the screening committee, I got nothing but, you know, absolute great things to say about you guys and, and the job you've done to date. And, you know, I'm very confident that between the team we've assembled, the team here, that we will pick, you know, the best candidate for the position. Thank you.
I know it's a, it's a small pool of people you're working with that are seeking managers' jobs and, you know, government like this, town managers' positions. And you are very well-known in the, in the industry. So I have very mu, I have a lot of confidence that you're going to be bringing us forward some real good candidates. And I do have to comment on the interview I had with you. Unfortunately, we weren't able to get on Zoom.
Yeah, we had technical difficulties.
Technical difficulties, but I was very, very impressed. And what impressed me the most was that, after I made a statement, that you did respond to my statement with a question or, you know, whatever, but you always, always responded to them. And I, I felt very comfortable and confident that you're going to present to the committee the right people. And I know tonight, the main thing was make sure there was an introduction and then discussing, you know, the salary that will be, you'll be looking at. So do I have anybody else that wants to speak?
Let me just say also, at the end of, you know, when it gets to the point where we're presenting to the Select Board, we're available to talk to any of you at any point, you know, because you may have questions about any part of, you know, you're going to get, you know, again, the applications, you know, the resumes and, you know, the background. You may have questions. We're open to that personal phone call. You have our information. So I just want to let you know, we take the phone calls, you know, as we go through the process.
Thank you. I have one quick memo here from the temporary town manager.
Are you guys done? I'm sorry. Yeah, no, I, I agree with all my colleagues, the praise that they have for you and for the Select Committee. Yeoman's work so far, and I don't expect it to be any different. Certainly show your commitment when you, when we talked on Saturday as you were driving home from Florida. So for...
Stuck in traffic, and I had someone else driving. I wasn't driving, my friend was driving at that point.
You're taking the notes, yeah.
Yeah, you know, so I was stuck with, I'm stuck in traffic in DC, you know, so getting through DC.
No, I'm looking forward to the process, and I think that the team that has been set up is, is top-notch, and I would expect nothing else but the best.
Great, thank you. Lill, you have any comments?
No, just that I, I am pleased as well with the, to have John's team on board. So I'm looking forward to the process to keep, you know, moving along, so thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, this is the memo I sent to the Board of Select, the Select Board on Wednesday, December 6, 2023. I met with John Petron and Julie Jacobson from Community Paradigm regarding the status of the search for new town manager, and they advised community survey was issued to the residents to receive their input. They've also met with the number of department heads. For them to move forward with this process, they have requested Select Board give them a range, a salary range to add to the posting. They are recommending $220,000 plus or minus. As you know, there's only one Select Board meeting in December, so I'm asking the board to vote on Monday night to allow Community Paradigm to continue to move forward with this process. And Mr. Chair, as you know, Board to Consider number six is in regards to this.
Thank you, Mr. Smigge. I would like to bring up our Board to Consider, number six, to establishing the town manager's salary. And that would be in the $220,000 plus range, plus or minus? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I was just curious if the Select, if the screening committee had an opinion on that? I don't know if you guys had talked about salary or not, or?
So we had a very cursory discussion relative to salary at our last meeting, and the $220,000 was right above the consensus of our group, of our committee. And we also think, as Chair of the committee, I could say $220,000, after speaking to the committee and having further discussions with Mr. Lynch, I would agree with what, what Mr. Petron said. I think it puts us in a very competitive spot in the market. It's not going to put us in the top end, certainly not going to put us in the low end. And relative to our geographic location, $220,000 salary is going to give us just about what we need to get a very attractive, very competent candidate here.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we accept the recommendation, 220 minus.
Kevin Kyrie is?
Greg, Greg, yes.
Frank West, yes.
Garrett.
Well, we must tell her yes.
And Garrett DePalma, yes. So moved. $220,000 plus or minus?
Right.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate that. Anything else? All set? Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Merry Christmas to you.
Thank you, guys.
Yes, happy holidays to all of you, and I'm set up for my therapist tomorrow after coming before a board again, so I'm all set to take care of this.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson, and thank you, Mr. Shampoo.
Okay, good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Now, memorandum from Communications?
You want to, do you want to do the other?
Oh, Communications, excuse me. Before we go into Communications, I'd like to have a moment of silence for Margaret White, who served 15 years at Town Hall, and John Forrest, former Selectman and also a former Board of Appeals member. I'd like a moment of silence for both, please. Thank you. Now onto Communications.
Mr. Chair, memorandum from temporary town manager Lou Sumaglia, reviewing of application for carnivals. This was a process that was changed from the Zoning Board of Appeals to give the Select Board the authority to grant the permission, to grant the license or whatever for the, for the carnival to take place. As you know, for many years, the ZBA would grant it, and now it's in the Board of, now it's on the Board of Selectmen. There is, I gave a, a sample application that was put in there. This is definitely a draft, we're just working on this. But what I'm looking for tonight is, is no vote, but I'm looking for some process to go through maybe going forward so we can vote on it. The Chairman of the Fourth of July Committee is going to be having to apply pretty soon, and this has been on the radar since August. So that's why I brought that up tonight, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, a question on, to the temporary town manager. Is this the application that they've used in the past? If it's not, can we get the application they used in the past?
This is, this is, yeah.
This is?
This is, yeah. This is for the Zoning Board of Appeals with the, basically the same one that we sent in to them.
Okay. Well, it is the same one?
Yes, it is. No, it is, it is. But you can change and add, and that's why we just look at it, and I'm, and hopefully the first meeting in January, we can come up with a consensus to come up with a process, really, to have the Board, the Select Board grant the permission for the carnival.
Okay.
And it was brought up that maybe there's a fee involved, you can waive for a nonprofit, or if any other nonprofits come up and want to have a carnival, you know, you, that was just something that was brought up, you might want to put a fee on it, but that's up to you people.
But this is, this is the same one?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Question I have is why can't we just adapt it? Adapt the application to the process we're going to be going through?
Yeah, I think that that's what the town manager wants us to do, is adapt what we want to incorporate into it.
Right, because obviously...
Whether we want to or not.
That's right. Because obviously, the, the place where they're going to have it might change this year, you know? So the parcel name and map, like I said, this is the ZBA's application. So just looking for you, you, this board, to look at it and come up with some ideas to have moving forward to grant permission to the Fourth of July Committee for the carnival.
I think it's worked in the past for many years, so I, you know, I appreciate the fact that you, you want to, give us the opportunity to tweak it, but I, I look through, and it's like...
Yeah, the only thing I don't see, and I don't know if it's required, Cory checks? But other than that, I mean, there are checks in here, but it's no, nothing to, for that.
Yeah.
It is?
The carnival?
I didn't, I didn't see it in here, but it is.
Yeah, I believe the carnival did that with the police department when they came aboard. I could, we could definitely check on that.
Yeah, I, I, I get it, but it's not listed in here, so someone could. I mean, if it's something that we do, we should probably put it in here, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
It's actually page two.
Yep.
Under rules and regulations.
Right, and that's where I put the word Cory check, because I didn't see it there.
If I could add a comment?
Well, I think they do more than a Cory check. I think they do a further, further background check than just, you know...
It just says that they're required to provide the names and social security numbers of all staff members, right? I don't see anything about...
Background checks.
Background checks, okay. Okay.
Which is obviously...
Sorry, I just wanted, because we just, I will send these, my comments, but one thing I think we need to do is put parameters around the setup and breakdown, because in terms of general, in that right now, where it's state, that they can do it on the date listed, but there's no time. So I think we just need to be cognizant of the residents, if it's a residential area that, you know, no setup, whatever, just going down, they say nothing before 6:00 AM, nothing after 9:00 AM or something like that. But I think it's a time frame that's put in there for setup and breakdown.
Yeah, I, yeah. That's why I was wondering, was there something more to this? Because I know that that was always a, a major issue to the, to the residents in the area, that they don't, you know, break down at midnight and, and have their trucks coming in and out until 4:00 in the morning. So I, I didn't know if the Fourth of July Committee puts those hours in here, and then we say yes to it or no to it, so that's...
Yeah, again, that's kind of why I brought this up tonight, so we can kind of tweak this in, in moving forward.
So, Mr. Chair, just so I can clarify, so we would be looking to adopt this with our suggested changes or...
Yep.
Corrections, edits, whatever, in January?
Yes.
Then would be, then, then this would be sent off to the Fourth of July Committee Chair?
Correct. I believe they apply in January, when it starts, correct?
Um, he's looking to apply early because we don't know where.
Because we don't know where, right?
Right.
Just, I think, I think some of us... Just, I think, I think some of us have gotten some questions around this, so I just wanted to know when we could expect that we may be taking this up. So if we're adopting the parameters in January, then it may not be till the end of January, February before we're able to take action?
Uh, I, would be the end of January, yes. By the time we make all the corrections and all, apply all of what we want to apply to it. And then the question's going to be, the big question is.
When they apply.
Yeah, when they apply.
Mr. Chair, if I may, we can tweak this to the, to the suggestions of this Board and I can put it in next week's packet. So you have a chance to look at it going forward and come back and say, we want to add something else.
Are you bringing it to a vote, this document, then?
Tonight?
Oh, no, not tonight.
Not tonight, I will.
In the future, you are going to bring it to a vote then?
Yeah, because we need a process, because it's never, now.
Just a suggestion, Mr. Chair, could we have the last two or three years application so we can see exactly how the 4th of July Committee filled it out? And then we can have an idea of what, of what we need to tweak to or not tweak? Or, I mean, we may not need to put anything in.
No, you're right.
Because they're going to, I mean, they need to file the application. We need to say, change the hours, no, yes, or no.
We do have, I know at least last year's.
Okay, so maybe we have, I don't know if Beverly can find a couple of years' worth of those. And I would also suggest that when we go through this, that I would assume that some of the residents in the area would probably be wanting to come to the meeting and allow them an opportunity to speak.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, just a question is that do we want to get something from the Police Chief to basically say what the takedown, what, what his recommendation on takedown setup type hours would be?
I believe that last year's, from what I understand, it was done. They don't step into it heavily, but they give their recommendations, like I think all the departments that are involved in it. Because they're going to have to handle any traffic logistics or anything else when it's being put up or taken down. And especially this year where we don't know where it's going to actually be. So in the package, it'll be a, either one or two prior applications. We will tweak it to our convenience and we'll work on it on our first meeting in January and resolve it at that time.
Through the chair, I don't want to belabor this, but do you think that the July 4th Committee knows where they're, they want to make their proposal to? Is it at where it currently is taking place at, at, yeah, at the 4th of July building area? Or is it at the Textron area and Yentile property area? Do we have any, you know, can we find, even find that out?
Where I was, I was up there with Judge Hooper and some people from the Town Hall, New Town Hall Company that's building it. And they're still trying, I believe they're trying to tweak the dates because of all the underground work they're going to have to do, all the water line service and such. I think we should maybe get them into one of our meetings or either that, or have a memo from them when, how they feel the property will be for, for the carnival. Would it, would the, would that area be usable or would it not be usable?
And if I may, Mr. Chair, that, and that goes back to the process, right? If we find out that it's just not going to be there, then in the application, it, it, where, where is it going to be? Parcel name and map, map and lot number. So we'll, we'll be able to, maybe after we talk to the, the OPM of the New Town Hall, they'll say, yeah, this isn't going to happen. And, but I, I think tonight, what we're really looking for is just to start the process of the Board of Selectmen approving the carnival. Like in the past, it's been Zoning Board of Appeals, so now it's on you guys and girls, so.
Mr. Chairman, forgive me, but you just mentioned the end of January, then you just said we're going to take it up at January, first meeting in January. I'm just trying to, obviously, some of the same people have reached out. So I'm going to give a clear message to when they can expect.
Our first meeting in January, we should address it completely. And our second meeting in January, I was looking at having, so that we have the application and everything for the first meeting.
So they're going to apply before January 8th?
No, and then they would have to, once we approve the application, the way we want to, we want to set it up, then they would have the right to, at that time, to apply after we, but we have to set up the program first.
Yeah, I'm pretty confident that we can have, we can be ready for the first meeting in January to approve the application and approve the process, and then we can get it to the 4th of July Committee and let them apply. But I'm thinking the first meeting in January, we should be able to move forward with the application and the process. Is that what you're looking for? I'm sorry.
No, I, I think we're doing a lot of guessing right now. We don't have the application until they apply. So I'm saying if the meeting is January 8th and they don't apply till January 9th, we're continuing to guess. Is what I'm trying to get at.
Well, what, what I'm looking at is we have to get the, the application.
Correct.
And we should have that by January meeting, the first January meeting, shouldn't we?
Oh, yeah, yeah. That's, that's what I'm saying. I'm sorry.
Then we approve it, then we approve it and then the application can go out.
So my, my end game here is to be able to tell people who are interested when they should come to the meeting.
Correct.
You know, when should they be able, and I, and a few minutes ago, it was the end of January, now it's January 8th. I just want to be clear. That's, that's all.
If I may, Mr. Chair, I, I'm pretty confident that our office will have the application set up where, with, with the changes that you had suggested, get them in maybe next week's packet so you have a chance to go over them. And then, January 8th, we can vote on the application and the process. So they could come in and maybe the next meeting, or, or whenever they get their application filled out.
Thank you.
So the first week in January, the first meeting in January, we should be ready to go for use, for this Board to vote on the application and process.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we table item number six, Board to Consider, until the January meeting.
Mr. Chairman, we've already taken up.
We already took up.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, excuse me. I thought we had.
Yeah, there's no Board to Consider.
There's a lot of Board to Consider, my apologies.
No, I just wanted to.
I thought we were doing this as a Board to Consider.
No, I just wanted to get it out there.
Six, sorry, circle, because it was my error. Apologize, gentlemen and lady.
Any other questions on this? Lil, do you have any questions on this at all? Thank you.
Okay, next memorandum.
It's from Jamie McGoldy, DPW Director, regarding the ARPA funding status update. He put a real nice memorandum here. It shows where a lot of the ARPA money. This is for you to, for my office to provide the Board of Selectmen with a proposal of the planned use of the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds and correspondence dated November 5th, 2021. As stated in the memo, ARPA funding awarded to the town of Wilmington in the amount of $7,7864 must be obligated by or before December 31st, 2024, and expended by December 31st, 2026. The following chart serves as a reminder to the current planned allocation of funding, followed by updates on each project.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Just a quick question to the manager through you. Any funds that are not used or they don't exceed the amount, the money's going back to free cash, I would imagine?
Yep. Yes, sir.
And we have to have it expended by a certain date, which is 2020, December 31st, 2020. Twenty, has to be allocated by the 2024 deadline and then expended by 2026.
And Jamie McGoldy has done an amazing job and to read through this, you could see all the work that he's done, put into this.
Any other questions on this? Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I did notice under the facade and streetscape improvements, there's $300,000, but there's zero expenditures. I thought it, that there was expenditure, okay.
There is, and it's, I'm not sure if this was. We, Jamie put this in, Mr. McGoldy put this in for us, and I don't think all these numbers, expenditures to date are up, up to date. Because obviously that, that, the meeting where they expended that grant for facade and streetscape, I will have that put on there.
If I may, they allocated, I think, $142,000 was awarded, but the, the people need to do the work, provide the receipts back, and then, then the money gets expended. So it might be that the, the companies are in process of doing the work. And once, like I said, once the work is completed, then they submit the invoice, if you will, or the request for the grant.
Yeah, I would almost agree with you, Mr. West, but there's two things here. They say final expenditures, final expenditures. The other ones don't have the item final expenditures beside it. So I'm assuming that those were projected expenditures, just like the 140. Inside the description, it says 140, so I think it should be, be placed in there.
I'll get that. Any other questions?
Memorandum from John O'Neill, IT Director, 2024 MIT Cybersecurity Assessment Clinic Participation. This is something we've done in the past in our IT department. Mr. O'Neill does an amazing job with the cybersecurity testing that all employees have to do if they have a email or if they're on the town website, computers. They have to go through cybersecurity training. He's done a nice job of that. Communication from Deborah A. Wagner, Director of Accounts, Massachusetts Department of Revenue. Certification of fiscal year 2024 tax rate. That was what was presented to this Board at the last meeting. It has been approved. And it just says, Dear assessors, the fiscal year 2024 tax rate has been certified by the Bureau of Accounts for Wilmington. Four pages of tax recalculation form and the levy limit worksheet, not applicable to district, available on Division Local Services website.
Any questions? Six, we.
Going Board to Considers?
Yeah, we're into Board to Considers now.
Board to Considers, number six, you have already taken care of. Board to Consider, request of Chris Harper, Friends of the Wilmington Baseball, to conduct the fundraiser car wash at the Public Buildings Department on Saturday, May 18th, 2024, with a rain date of May 19th, 2024, from 9:00 AM to noon.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Kevin Kyrie, yes.
Greg Bendel, yes.
Frank West, yes.
Belinda Selly, yes.
Garrett DePalma, yes. So approved.
Okay, number eight is Board to Consider, Approval of the 2024 Licenses for Alcoholic Beverages, Automatic Amusement, Billboard Room, Class 1 Vehicle Sales, Class 2 Vehicle Sales, and Common Victulars License and Entertainment.
So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Kevin Kyrie, yes.
Greg Bendel, yes.
Frank West, yes.
Belinda Selly, yes.
Garrett DePalma, yes.
Okay, I appreciate that. And just to let you know that the Police Chief has said there was no problem with any of those. Okay, Board to Consider, Executing the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission, 2024 Seasonal Population Increase Estimation Form. Mr. Chair, what this is, is like down the Cape where there's seasonal bars and things that are open. Wilmington there, projection is zero.
Do I hear a motion?
Uh, move to execute, execute the form.
Second.
All those in favor?
Kevin Kyrie, yes.
Greg Bendel, yes.
Frank West, yes.
Belinda Selly, yes.
Garrett DePalma, yes. So moved.
Number 10, Board to Consider, Issuing a Sunday Entertainment License for K-1 Speed, Inc., 40 Fordham Road.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Kevin Kyrie, yes.
Greg Bendel, yes.
Frank West, yes.
Lil Maselli.
Maselli, yes.
And Garrett DePalma, yes.
And we will have all those two sign after the meeting, if I could have you in the, in the office there. And that is it for Board to Consider, Mr. Chair.
Now we have public comments. Please state your name and address, sir.
Good evening. I think I, I think you know who I am. I'm going to remain anonymous tonight.
You're just so anonymous.
Before I make some comments, I just had a question for the town manager, Mr. Semaglia. Mr. Semaglia, the town of Wilmington treats its water and it takes contaminants out. Can you tell us where those contaminants go and who hauls them?
I actually put a letter in last, last week's packet. I don't have the names off the top of my head, but that is all done with the EPA and when they, they go out there and it's all, it's actually going to landfill. It's used, I forget the town, I'm sorry, but I did put a.
Is it Peabody?
I think it's South Shore. Yeah, I think it's South Shore. I'm sorry, but I did put a memo in the packet last week explaining that.
The warrants that you voted on tonight, were there any accounts payable to the company or companies that take away that contaminated material?
I don't know what I, I do have the numbers of the warrants if you'd like, but I don't.
Do you have the, do you have the dollar amounts?
I do.
Could you read that to, to us?
Sure. The November 29th warrant?
Or just a warrant number?
Two, four, two, two. I'm sorry, November 20, yeah, two, four, two, two?
Yes.
$590,332.30 for the invoices. Warrant three, four, two, two, W, $1 million.
This is for this week?
The last two warrants that we just proved, yeah.
Okay, because these ones don't say three, four, it says two, four. They start with two, four.
That's what you said, two, four.
Two, four. Yeah, that might be my error. Three, two. Yeah, okay. Two, four, two, two. Did I say three? I'm sorry, two, four, two, two. Two, four, two, two, W, two, four, two, two, T, two, four, two, three, two, four, two, three, W, two, four, three, T, and two, four, two, three, S.
Yes, I'm reading those, but can you read the dollar amounts of the warrants?
Sure, which one you want?
All of them, for the public.
I told you the first one, right? $590,332.30 for invoices. $1 million, $1,435,181, $1,435,181.57 wire transfers, Blue Cross, Middlesex Retirement, those things. The two, four, two, two, T, $457,557.8 is the town payroll. December 6th warrants, the two, four, two, three. You following along? You want to?
Yeah, I'm listening. It's on, it's on record, it's being recorded.
Okay. Two, four, two, three, $1,140,475.78 for invoices. Two, four, two, three, W, $542,156.64 wire transfers, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, Middlesex Retirement, et cetera. Two, four, two, three, T, $556,632.26 is the town payroll. And two, four, two, three, S, $1,735,735,511.89 is for school payroll.
Okay. I rose up earlier to make a point of order when you were about to take the vote on the warrants. And my point of order was that other towns, such as Newburyport, Middleton and other communities, actually publish their dollar amounts on their agenda for each warrant. It is public information, it's public funds. As a matter of fact, the city of Newburyport has what's called an open checkbook where every single expenditure, every check that gets issued, you can go online and, and view every expenditure and what it's for. I rose to make a point of order because there could be a problem with one of the warrants. It's a bit disturbing that none of you know or can tell me, or the town, where the contaminated material is going to from the water clean out. And it's disturbing that nobody can tell me who is hauling it. So when you're, when you're taking a vote to approve a warrant and there could. So when you're, when you're taking a vote to approve a warrant, and there could be a problem with where it's going, I think it's kind of an important issue.
I can, if you...
So, if you want to take a recess and get that for the public...
No, 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 no.
No, 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 no.
I just know that it's not contaminated, when they're, they're covering landfills with it and using it for agricultural stuff.
Yeah.
So it's not...
Contaminated.
Totally contaminated, like...
I, I went to the DEP, I got some paperwork on it and that sort of thing. I did happen to follow a truck to where it was going, and it was definitely not going to a landfill.
Agricultural use.
It was not going to a landfill.
But they can use it for agricultural use, too.
So the question is, who are we paying, where is it supposed to go, if it's being taken out of our water because it's not good enough for our water, and it's being dumped in high volume on somebody else's property, which abuts people that have water wells, it's not good for us, but it's gonna be good for them?
All this, Mr. McDonald, just, just so you know, what I know of it is that this is not a contaminated material when it leaves.
Mr. DePalma, can you tell the town how many water treatment facilities there are?
Next question?
You don't know?
Next question.
Okay. So, I have some things that I wanted to mention tonight. Regarding the town manager's contract, you just voted to approve $220,000 for a new town manager, and I believe that the town meeting actually has to vote on that and appropriate that. But I read the temporary town manager's contract, and it was $154,000. As a matter of fact, I was at a finance committee meeting, and Mr. Semaglia stated that the members of the committee that were negotiating his contract wanted to pay him more than that, and he settled for 154,000. So, my question is, when the town meeting has appropriated a dollar amount for the town manager's salary, and we have a current town manager, I believe in, I believe the language in the contract is guaranteed money? So, my question is this, if you hire a town manager, and you want to pay him $220,000 a year, and the money is guaranteed, or if there's an overlap, how can you possibly take a vote to pay a new town manager $220,000 when town meeting hasn't appropriated that amount? So that was, that was one other thing. The other...
We'll take it under advisement.
Who would be advising you on that, Mr. DePalma? Who, who would you, who would you be seeking advice from if you take it under advisement?
I did speak to Brian, I did speak to Brian.
Yeah.
I did speak to Brian Perry, our, by his director.
And how?
He would budget accordingly.
Yep.
Depending what's coming up, but of course, town meeting is not that far away, but he would be able to budget accordingly.
Okay. The other issue I had, the board's being asked to approve minutes of meetings. Every single organization that I've ever been a part of, when they have minutes that are to be approved, the prior meeting minutes are always approved at the following meeting. This board is being asked to approve meeting, meeting minutes at times from a year or two ago, and there are at least one selectman on this board that wasn't at that meeting or part of the board when those meeting minutes occurred. And so, I would like to see the board actually approve minutes from now on for the previous meeting, because it's a little ridiculous asking somebody to approve meeting minutes from two years ago when he wasn't even on the board. And the other thing I wanted to mention is, I saw a, a job posting today for a, a public building system manager, and I was wondering why you're looking to hire somebody else? Who's been taking care of that building now? Why do we have to hire somebody else as a building systems manager?
George is retiring. George Hooper is retiring.
George is a super, George was a superintendent.
Correct.
Yeah.
So he also did the building maintenance sys...
That gentleman is now going to be the superintendent.
Okay.
So you're gonna have an opening, so we have to hire someone.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I just had, I just had another question.
You have enough, you've had enough time.
Well, this is kind of important.
We really appreciate what you've said, but I'd like to move on, we have some other important things we'd like to discuss, and I want to thank you very much.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you. Announcements?
Mr. Chair, I just want to simply wish everybody a Merry Christmas, we don't meet again until January 8th. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to all my colleagues, the staff here, our town employees, and all our residents.
Mr. Chair, I want to do the same, you beat me to the punch, but I'm gonna add in a happy and healthy new year to that Merry Christmas.
Absolutely.
I got nothing now, I guess.
I want to wish everyone a Happy New Year, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, be safe. We'll see you again next year, and we look forward to enjoying the holidays, and again, be safe out there and respect other people.
I'll make a motion to adjourn?
Nope, nope. We got new business?
A nice try.
We got, any new, nice move.
Sorry.
Any new, any new business? No new business, we'll go on to important dates.
Mr. Chairman, this Saturday, December 16th, dedication of the Hidden Wounds Monument, that was a letter sent to you from the Department of Veteran Services, the Wilmington Department of Veteran Services invites you to participate in dedicating Eagle Scout candidate Evan Waltag's Hidden Wounds Memorial. The dedication will be Saturday, December 16th, at 11:00 AM, at the Veterans Memorial Park at Silver Lake and Main Street. This Sunday, December 17th, the laying at the wreaths at the Veterans Lot, Wildwood Cemetery, we do all our killed in action and wound and missing in action. The wreaths are purchased by the American Legion, the VFW, the Sons of the American Legion, and I believe the, the Women's Auxiliary Legion, they're the ones who purchased those wreaths, and they're not wreaths, and they're not cheap, and they're very nice. So, that's at 10 o'clock, Veterans Lot, Wilmington Cemetery. December 21st...
Mr. Chair, just to let our temporary town manager know, I will not be at either of those, I'm away in Philadelphia, so unfortunately, I'll be thinking of...
You've been there in the past, and we appreciate it. December 21st, Town Manager Screening Committee, Town Hall, Room 9, right here, at 7:00 PM. December 25th, Town Offices Closed. January 1st, Town Offices are Closed. January 3rd is Sean Allen Collier Day. January 2nd to January 12th is Curbside Collection of Christmas Trees. January 8th is the Select Board Town Hall, Room 9, at 7:00 PM. January 15th, Martin Luther King Day, Town Offices will be closed. January 22nd, Select Board Town Hall, Room 9, 7:00 PM. And January 29th, Select Board Town Hall, Room 9, 7:00 PM, for the Town Manager's FY25 Budget Presentation.
Now I'd like to turn the floor over to Greg Bendel for Salute Service.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, on behalf of the board, it's my pleasure tonight to present our Salute to Service Award to Richard Dick Wetslers of the United States Navy. Mr. Wetslers served from March 1951 to February of 1955 during the Korean War, served aboard the USS The Sullivan's. His awards include the National Defense Medal, the Service Medal, the Navy Occupation Service Medal, the European, United States Service Medal, Korean Service Medal, and on top of that, Rich was an avid traveler, enjoyed traveling all over the world, and took every opportunity to explore, we're glad he did, and we are grateful for his service, and we salute him, thank you.
And he makes every Wilmington High School hockey game.
And he was my Little League coach, too, so just saying.
Do I have a motion to adjourn? Ms. Masselli?
I'll make it now, I was joking.
No, you weren't.
No, I was, just when you were Merry Christmas and everything, I thought, well, no, I will truly make a motion to adjourn now.
Second.
All those in favor?
Kevin Kyrie, yes.
Greg Bendel, yes.
Frank West, yes.
Garrett DePalma, yes. Merry Christmas and Happy New Years to everyone, enjoy, good night, and see you next year.